All the regular city council meeting to order here at City Hall, April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
Not online.
Okay. All right. Do we have any citizens comments this evening?
Yeah, that's why I came. I'm Tim McKernan. Most of you guys know me, some of you don't. I got a letter in the mail this last week or two about my house numbers, and that's what I wanted to address you about. I've talked to a few of you, I've talked to Chief Adams and Marshall and Ryan and Kyle. I drew a blank there for a second. But I guess my concern is, I mean, my house does have numbers on it, and I wanted to say I do fully agree that houses do need to have numbers on them. I mean, it's difficult for emergency personnel to find the numbers. I fully understand that. I mean, I haul people for a living, and it's difficult finding people's houses. But for instance, like me and myself, I do have numbers. It fully complies with the ordinance. I remember watching the council meetings earlier, early on last year in July and prior when you guys were talking about the ordinance, and I saw the ordinance posted there. And then, at the same time, I also felt the same as I do now that I'm in compliance with it. So I didn't do anything with it. And I guess I just wanted to voice my opinion that on that appliance, I mean, I fully see where Jamie's letter said that it should be attached or fixed. And I could see why they want them on the same place, but on the same hand, the ordinance doesn't say that. And I mean, if that's what they need it to be, then the ordinance should be changed to read what you want exactly. It's kind of like writing you a speeding ticket for going twenty and a thirty when the speed limit's posted thirty. If you want us to go twenty, put twenty out there, you know? And if the ordinance has changed, I don't have a problem putting the numbers on, but at this point where I feel like I'm in compliance, you know, I'm not going to change them. I will say it would have been nice at the beginning if maybe the letters were sent out to the ones that weren't in compliance or the ones that were felt not to be in compliance, to give them more of an opportunity to step up and maybe change their numbers and fix them long before the last minute, you know, deadline of starting to charge people. And so I guess that's just my opinion on it. It is what it is, and I wanted to voice that to you guys, too.
Okay. Jim, you've spoke, you told, you and I conversed via email. You, who did you speak with? You spoke with Chief?
Chief Adams.
Chief Adams. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you looked at his numbers?
Yes.
Your opinion?
I mean, per the ordinance says they have to be visible from the front, from the street. That is the way I read the ordinance and everything. I think things ought to be different in there, but that's not for me. That's, you know, that was already done. But as per the ordinance, yes, he's in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay. I mean, you can clearly, I've seen pictures that you sent me, and you can clearly see them.
Yeah.
At a distance, because you did take them from, I believe you said, from the street.
From the street, right. And I did move them up higher to make them easier.
Right, right.
Because, see, I don't like that place, but if that will appease, then I'll be in there.
Okay. Council, any questions or any comments on this?
I think it's something we need to discuss, because just like he said, per the ordinance, he's in compliance. Now, I do know that there were some other comments made that, well, I've got it on my mailbox, and I've got it on the curb, but I'm not putting it on my house.
Right.
So we, as a council, need to either make an amendment to that ordinance and either state that it is required to be on the house, or visible in front of the house, or make an exclusion that it cannot be on the curb and the mailbox. So that way, and when I talked to Tim, it was the same thing. I don't necessarily have an issue with his, even being on the rock down in front. The one weird chance that, you know, a kid throws his bike up against the rock, covers it up, and they have an emergency. But at least his is closer to the house, you can see it. But if it's out at the curb and on the mailbox, because mailboxes are supposed to be curbside now, that doesn't help us if somebody's parked on the street.
Right. And also, Chief brought it up, and I'm sure he's getting ready to say this, is there's houses in town that have mailboxes on adjacent streets. They're not, there's, it's confusing enough when you have a house that's sitting at a corner, and the front door is on the adjacent side, and you think the house has a First Street address, and it has a Pearl address or Monroe, because the house is sitting at an angle. But I do think the letter's misconceived, and maybe we should have done better portraying it. But the point we want to do it is to help our emergency services and our LEO that we actually have a lot of non-local new people, which is pretty exciting, that don't know who Marshall Sanders is, or Kyle Bunker is, or whoever. But maybe we should have worded the letter different and done it right, and sent out a, you know, if you got this, and you think you're in compliance, we apologize, or, you know, if you have questions called. Maybe we should have done that in hindsight, and it is. But the mailbox thing, we discussed at the first meetings, irrelevant, because I'm actually the one that asked that question, because that's how old my stuff is. And I got a letter, too, just so you know, and I forgot. And I got.
I have it on my mailbox.
But I, but Chief brought it up. I didn't even know it. There's houses that have, and once he said that, I looked, and sure enough, he is right. I mean, the properties have mailboxes across the street. That's irrelevant. But having a big rock, you know, I, I get it. I don't, I don't know the answer to it. It's a gray area, but he is right. The ordinance is not, the wording of the ordinance, if you're in attorney, is heavily gray.
And my biggest problem with anything is the curbs, the curb ones. They fade out, they're gone, a car parks in front of them, anything like that. I went through, Jamie had put out the list, and I hit every house. That's what I did from ten thirty this morning until three thirty this afternoon, was drive to every single one of those and check them, yes or no, whether they were in compliance or not. And there's some stretches where it's hard to determine where it's at. And I see Jamie's deal like us, even if there's just a little bit more than a sliver gap, that's just a little bit more offset. It's funny that it goes from an oh-nine to a thirteen or whatever, and there's nothing in between there, and it's hard to find. And that's why it's just, but the curb ones, that's the ones I really just, I do not like is the curb ones. You just can't see it. And then, like yours, I mean, you can't put it on the curb, can't be down. I mean, it's tough. It's a tough thing to do. I get it. But it does help. I mean, even me, growing up here, I knew where everybody was by name. Now I don't, you know? I mean, I have to go off the address to include businesses, you know? I mean, if you give me the name, but then I need an address, I need to match those up. And that's what I had a hard time today, was matching up what house, went with what number, when I had several of them on a block. So it's just kind of tough. But, yeah, we're getting there. I don't know what the numbers were in compliance today from the start. I didn't have a chance to count them.
Been trying to print it out with the selection, and my Excel and I aren't getting along right now.
Yeah, I don't know.
Significantly better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We had a lot of yeses on there that I had checked. So, yeah, it was.
Probably like seventy-five.
All right. So why don't we go ahead and put that on next meeting, to look at the ordinance and see about making an amendment for that. And we can discuss it then, and then decide how to word it a lot better. Okay? Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Are people getting fined right now?
Today was the first day of fines.
So do we still fine people?
We're gonna have to put that on hold until we critique our.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's just.
Yeah, that's right.
I would say, yes.
I would, I wouldn't quit checking them, I guess. I mean, I'll tell you right now, I'm not in compliance with my laundry mat. If you want to fine me, fine me. I'll pay it. I don't care. I just haven't had time to do it.
Correct.
I will do it. But I don't think that we can sit here and say that we're going to change it next meeting and continue to fine people until we change it.
Well, the thing, like, the ones that are getting fined are the ones that have nothing.
And I guess I'm okay with that.
I mean, because we even went through and got the curbed and the mailboxes right now, and the rock, there's maybe a handful that have rocks, or different things that aren't affixed to the property. So the ones that are still no on the list, I believe, are ones that just do not have it at all. That's the way it should be.
I think at the moment.
I mean, I didn't check them, but I think you were on there.
I'm sure I am, because I'm telling you, I haven't put them on there yet. I've got them, I just haven't done it.
I think at the moment, we should just halt, halt the fines until council has a chance to look over the ordinance and make amendments.
Do we want to discuss it tonight, and that way John can have it ready for next meeting?
We can do that. We could add that to the agenda.
So, I mean, I think we probably need to make a decision tonight, and that way we can approve it in two weeks, and not put it out another four weeks. I mean.
Well, do we, okay, we can just talk about it under new, or the old business?
Yeah. So. I was gonna say, it's still on there, isn't it, house numbers?
Yeah.
We can just discuss it.
We can just go ahead and discuss it tonight. Okay.
So, Tim, hopefully we'll have an answer?
Yeah.
By the end of the night?
Well, I might just hang out and see what.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Before you, one question would be if it does change to being affixed, like, for instance, my house, if I put it up by my door, I mean, my street, or my porch light's not on, and you can't see it at all, you know? And that's one thing to maybe consider or to think about, because there's, there's a lot of houses like that. When the lights are off, you can't see it anyways, even if it is, you know, nailed to the, that's one reason I like, I like my rock. I mean, that's perfect for me. That street light across the street's just shining on it. So, that's all, shut up now.
Well, I think that is a problem, like, if they're not in the same location. Even driving, when I did the entire list, like, I mean, it wasn't an easy project. Like, I had people calling me, oh, I have them. Okay, but you have brown wood like that with gold letters, like.
And I've noticed on some of them, if you're driving a truck, because they've got them by their porch light.
You can't see it.
But if you're in a truck, you can't see it. If you're in a car, you can see it perfectly fine on the side of their house. So, I mean, there's.
Okay. Well, let's discuss it under old business. So, all right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, April sixth, twenty twenty one.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, zero four, twenty 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 one, the amount of sixty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars and ninety cents.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I've got abstained.
Okay. Motion carries, one abstained. Okay, moving on to department heads. Jeff?
Oh, we're still working on the West Street, the West First Street line. We're in the hot work part of it now, where it goes pretty slow. You know, the guys that work for me are not very well-trained on what we're doing at this point, so it's a very slow process. We're trying to leave everybody's power on as much as we can so that we don't kill out everything clear to cornrows. So, we've had some interruptions. We've had some burn downs on some transformers. We've had some on-end stuff. We've helped the water departments, you know, that stuff. But we have to wait. Where we are at now, we have to pick, we've been picking the phases up and doing it, where we're cutting an arm in, and it almost has to be calm when we do it, so that we can grab everything and pick it up out of the way as we set the stuff. So it's a slow process, but we're getting it done. So, anyway, hopefully by this time, next meeting, we'll be done. We'll have it energized. But, you know, we may have to kill it out one day, but it'll just depend on how much help I can get from Jason, too, because he's really the only other one besides me that's done very much of it. So we'll just see how it goes. But other than that, just regular stuff, you know? Fix this, tear up that, and all that good stuff.
He did get Tom Turner turned back on, and Alan got his transformer back.
Yeah, but that's, that might be a problem. You know, I'm having an awful time getting these transformers, and I don't know how much harder it's going to get. Supposed to meet with a guy from Newton, but if I have to buy them here, and I have to do the prices that these guys get, they're about forty-five percent higher than what I pay for them. I mean, it's terrible, but it might come to that. These, some of these transformers, I've had ordered for three months, you know, including the one for the truck parking. So I just, I just don't know.
I can tell you from a business standpoint, Jeff, and Ryan, and maybe some others can too, but if you're like me, I've happened to buy tires whenever, wherever I can get them at whatever price they got.
And that's, and that's about where.
Because the future of it right now, I mean, tires are hard to get, and I'm sure everything else.
Transformers are well with copper. Price of copper, you know, like I told you when I bought that reel of wire last meeting, that it's, it's going extremely high. So I don't know, I don't know where we're at. But hopefully, we can keep material enough that, pad mount transformers are kind of a problem, because I don't have very many out. But I have no repairs for any, you know, that's the reason I stole Alan's for as long as I did. But, and I'm trying to work with this guy to rebuild four or five that I have. But I don't know where I'm going to be at with that deal, and I don't know what the cost is going to be, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay, moving on. Water Department, Jason?
Well, the sewer, I was getting some sewer bid, or for the lining of the sewers. And I sit there, I was calling these people to get them. Of course, one person from Kansas City had got me his. And then this gentleman called, or texted me back, and said, sorry for leaving you hanging. Owner has decided to retire, and since we can't find no help, nobody wants to work, we're folding up the place, and it's a good time to exit. So they shut down that one. And then the other one I got, I called him, he's out of Colorado. And then, so my question here was on that one. The rest of them are going to be in far east Missouri, far north Nebraska, and place, I don't know, down in Dallas or somewhere, clear down there. So my question is to you, do you want me to continue to get those, another bid for that? Being that the mileage is probably going to kick that bid way up anyway. So that's what I was wanting to know, is do you want me to continue finding two bids for, another bid for the sewer lining, when we have two still? Because the third dropped out. They quit.
Did we get a bid from, or did you contact the guys that did the Cameron? Don't they do it as well?
No, mayors don't do it.
They do, who do they suggest?
They just clean, and they.
Who do they refer, or do they have a suggestion?
I, I sat there and called, I called KRWA, and Charlie sent out me a list of what they do. And then they had different ones, manholes, cleaning, or sewer lining, cleaning, Cameron, and then it checked, you know, checked in the boxes of whatever they did. And so the ones that I checked there, and the ones that were checked, is the three I got the closest, and then the rest are going to be far further away. And so I, I could call them and see if they'd want to, send them all the info and see if they'd want to shoot me a bid. But I'm just wondering if the mileage isn't going to make that bid just because of the mileage.
What about referrals? These companies?
I'm still working on that.
Be nice to have a good referral or a couple of different people.
Well, that's fine.
I mean, just.
I can get that going.
And maybe look into that, see the mayor recommends, maybe. I mean, surely they recommend somebody here, I'd say.
Okay.
The mileage, I guess maybe I'm looking at it wrong. The mileage doesn't concern me as much as, isn't that going to be just a, I mean, am I out of touch with what that's going to cost? But isn't that going to be catastrophically expensive?
Well, the one.
The lining period?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a several hundred thousand dollar project.
It's going to be a good project.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred and eighty-two thousand or something.
Yeah, and that, and that wasn't doing at all, was it?
That was doing our worst of the century, really bad.
I mean, that was quite a bit of stuff.
That was doing the threes and fours is what we come up with. The ones, the twos without, you know, their light crack.
Probably thirty percent?
Yeah.
Thirty percent of our sewer.
Thirty, forty, yeah.
Yeah. I guess I just don't want to discourage us from spending ten thousand on a company that's farther away, that's way more capable and reputable, I guess.
That makes sense.
But I don't know.
But you have two bids, is that right?
The gentleman said he'd get me one, he forgot about it, he's going to get it back to me. But the other guy from Kansas City's got it already.
I'd say he's just getting it worked on.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to.
And it may not hurt to reach out to a couple of the ones that are a little further away and just fill them out.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base, let you know it's getting worked on. And then just let, you know, we got the concrete poured at the pool. Hope everybody likes it. And then I called Kurt to get boring done for the fire department deal, and he said, call him next Tuesday. And then, so I'm going to call him Tuesday, and hopefully he can sit there and shoot a time, and then we're going to, because I told him, at least give me a couple of days, because where that hole's going to be, on the gentleman across the street where the hair cutting place is, I don't want to leave a big hole there for two weeks. So I'm trying to get him to zero that down, so I can sit there and get those bell holes dug, so that way he, he won't have a big hole in his driveway, because that's where it's going to be. It's almost right in the middle of his driveway. So that's where I met with that. And then, and we're going to be replacing some water meters, because they have some panels. So we got the one calls in on that. And then the other one is, the other one is for Jamie to bring up a well number two, which she has returned. That's about all I have for the water and sewer on that.
Okay. You have anything, anybody have any more questions under Water Department? You have anything for street parks?
Oh, yeah, just, we got the cleanup done, of course, you know. And then we sat there and got the, put the post out for the gate, got them all cemented in. We're going to do the welding, hopefully weld that gate up and get that done this week. And then we've been helping Rusty on some roads, bitches. And then I was, we were talking about it, and I just wanted, I was talking about taking a tree out over here on the sidewalk and just getting that out of there. Because one of the two things that's got to happen is that tree's got to come out for the water line to go to the curb or the corner, where we sit there and leave the tree, and then fill the corner in with concrete, and then eventually the roots are going to make that concrete come up anyway. So I just figured we could sit there and pull that tree in front of the post office, in the sidewalk.
Around the east side, east side of post office, there's a tree, and it's.
Yeah, the grates don't even fit on there no more, because it's just getting too big. So I figured it'd be best to just go get rid of the tree, and then fill that in with concrete, because if, I mean, leave that corner, or with a, with a sprinkler and some flowers, because if we fill that in, eventually that tree's just going to make that concrete chunk start coming up like that with the roots anyway, just like our curb problem.
It's pitching the water line that goes up and down.
Yeah. And so that's why I was thinking about just figuring, taking that out, and then leave at least one part with pretty flowers on the corner, so we can have water there.
Not much way around that. I mean, it's, the roots are going to start dirt in the concrete.
Well, that's just, just like our curbs around town, that's what's happening with them, you know?
Would it be beneficial to get all of those trees out if we're doing it one?
Those are.
Are they going to continue to get big like that?
How many trees do we have?
Those two.
And then two over there.
These are babies. We just planted them two, three years ago. Yeah, but these, these have overgrown the size of the grates that were put around them to start with. They've grown bigger than they were supposed to. But.
Just not much of any other way. I mean, you got the roots coming up. I mean, you can't, you just can't do anything, right?
It's going to be hard to get them out of there without breaking the sidewalk up the way it is. You know, they've covered, they've brought, they've shoved the grates clear out the way it is. So, and then we've got to be careful when we grind them out, not to catch the water line to sit down in there that feeds clear to the corners.
And if we need to beautify it, we can get a potted plant and planter or whatever, and businesses can volunteer to keep it going.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
A couple more things real quick, and then I'll let you go.
Okay.
But we're just bringing roads and everything. But then, on the curbing, that we're going to get ready to do some sealing and milling and all that stuff of these streets, I'm getting some curb measurements down and see if we can get a little curbing done on that. And it's, and it's coming down to a lot, 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 lot more than what I really, you can see from the road. So I'm just going to be kind of picky and choosy in that one, because we'd have some bust out, we have sixteen feet bust out, and you have one fourth foot chunk that's good. And then another three down, two that are good, five more that are bad, one good. So, I mean, it's just.
I had mentioned to Jason a couple weeks ago, you know, we're milling out the side of the streets. It'd be nice if there's some bad curb and guttering to go in and replace it now, instead of later, and then you have a patch in there and it just looks, looks bad. So we got to start somewhere in town. And if you guys are out and about, just travel along the streets that are getting milled and see what your opinion is. But there's a lot of curbing down around town that's bad. We just got to start somewhere, you know? So, just my opinion.
Couple years ago, they were, they were talking about fixing the dip on Seventh Street and Broadway.
Yeah.
That might be something that you look at this summer of doing after schools out, because that thing.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that's about this line, about this heat.
Yep, you, you.
I know exactly which one. Yeah, that's, that's definitely on the list. Yeah.
Because I know that's, that's been talked about for quite a while, and we haven't done anything. And do we know, are we doing anything? You know, we got a bid and approved to have the, the concrete and stuff redone on West Street for mantles. We approved to get all that fixed and.
Chris a few times, and he says we're still on the list.
Still behind, yeah.
Okay. I just, when we're talking about.
That's what he kind of told me.
Yeah, well.
It got towards the end of the year, and then he said, how bad do you want it fixed?
Well, and that was the last time I talked to him. He said, what's more important, your truck parking or Eighth, or West Street? And I said, well, if we can get Eighth Street drained, it'll be the truck parking. So you might as well do West Street, and then we'll be ready for the truck parking. So.
I just didn't know. I just knew that we had approved it last year.
Yeah, before Christmas, if I remember right, yeah. He just told me he was just so behind it. That's why I went ahead, went ahead and did the pool, because, you know, I mean, I talked to him before, and he was just so busy that I thought, well, let's get it done.
Anything else? Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason under Water Department?
Chat stuff's getting delivered. Some trucks showed up.
Yeah.
Jason, just again, I wanted to thank you and your crew for taking care of those potholes right behind the library on that as quickly as you did. I know you're busy, but we appreciated that.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
And also citywide cleanup for everybody.
Oh, yeah, that's another.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Police Chief, Chief Adams.
Um, we just have, we have a couple things we'll work on up in the PD. Had some training this week. Sheriff's Department, they had a car stop, called me back out tonight, and only got another hit. So, and we had a good, good stop on that one. So that was a good grab coming through the county. Other than that, we're just trying to, trying to do the best we can. So just keep it after it.
Good. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief? We hear anything from Chief Sanders?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, Jamie?
Um, we have decided to not rent out the, um, poop ponds for the goats, the.
Sheep?
Sheep. And there's goats in there. Yeah. The, the fence is not good, and we had too many issues, and it's just going to be easier to take the big mower, or the big tractor, and put the mower and take care of it on our end. So we're not going to do that. And then Danton has been talking to me a little bit about looking into the cost of reservicing the old tennis court and putting in pickleball courts there, if the funding is available, just to kind of get that livened back up and see what options could be. He said he doesn't know what condition it is, but he wanted to talk to me about it, so.
The rec commission's looking at footing the bill for it?
I'm not, I'm not positive on all that.
I just, there's a reason we didn't fix that tennis court. And we chose to go with the school and help them pay for theirs, because the concrete's busted out underneath all of that. So I just, that was my only, I mean, if.
I think he's just trying to come up with ideas, so it's not just a big.
I would be okay if the rec commission wants to put the bill on it, even though the city owns it. I mean, if they want to do that, I, I don't.
Yeah, I think the concern with it was underneath that carpet was it was, it was just cracked out, chipped up. And I mean, if they can come up with a great way to do it, I mean, how bad, I mean, it, there needs to be something there, you know? It should look nicer than what it is now. But it comes down to what's the cost, who's paying for it.
Yeah, we could help with it, but it sure needs to be a significantly joint effort.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe him and I can get together and just see what's going on and come back.
I guess I've never seen the underneath of it, but isn't that kind of what it was, chipped out?
It's broken really bad.
I think they said.
I was here when we put the carpet over the top. That's the reason we did. Yeah, it's, in fact, we talked really hard about pulling it clear out. We had a few ladies that still play tennis up there, and that's the reason the carpet's on there.
I'm, I'm all for it if they want to dig into it and see what they can come up with. I mean, I don't want to put the whole bill on it. I'm not saying we can't help in some way, but I'm not even sure what pickleball is, though.
I said, is that what you play at the lodge?
That's racquetball.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so. I am going to be starting, um, budget worksheets, so we need to figure out how the budget process needs to be this year, and what you guys want to do with meeting with department heads. And I'm, I am putting it down that I will have budget worksheets done, if all goes well, by Friday. if all goes well by Friday.
I would like to see when we do it to kinda go in the step the county does. You submit your budget. And throughout, before we get to the crunch time, you know, we take one or two every meeting. And we sit down and we go through them with the department head for twenty, thirty minutes. Or we look at them prior to and then we sit down and discuss cutting or increasing or instead of trying to do it all in one night.
Right.
It seems to work out pretty good for the county. I mean, you submit it and then if, if we wanna cut it up and take some out or add more to it, then that's what we're doing. We kick it back to them and give them some time to look over the changes we've made before we approve all that. That way we don't come in crunch time and we're trying to scramble to do it all at one time.
So I'll get those out and then should be sufficient time to be done by the last meeting in May, even the first meeting. I mean, they're not that hard to, to go through, so. We'll get them and start sending them to you and go over them at each meeting.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Jamie?
Old business, Jason, old business.
Okay, did we get anything from, uh, City Attorney John Beverman?
No, he's sick.
All right. Anybody have anything to pass on to John through Jamie?
Not yet.
Not yet? All right, moving on to old business. First thing on the ordinance, uh, ten seventy-one dash twenty house numbers.
My personal opinion, I think we just need to put in the ordinance that, uh, they cannot be on the curb or on the mailbox. That's not gonna be sufficient.
Yeah, I agree. I think if...
Up by the front of the house or attached to the house.
Yeah, I think a sign or a number rock is fine as long as it's visible, contrasting color, all that. Tim, Tim had called me and, yeah, we had talked about it kinda like Marshall said, you know? You have a rock down low and, and it looks nice. It does his house and, and he keeps his house up, but you know, we have to get together over it. You have an emergency and something's, you know, like Marshall said, bikes parked in front of it is my main concern. Or, you know, a bush grows up in front of someone else's house. You know, that's just my, that was my concern with it. Being up high, hopefully it's easier to see, you know?
I mean, as long as I could get, you know, if he didn't have his name on a rock and it was just the numbers sitting on the ground, that would be, that could be hard to see at night. But, you know, he's got his name and then the rock sits on top of it. So I mean, it's sitting, I don't know, thirty inches off the ground. I don't have a problem with that. I, I, my big problem is, is the sidewalk and the mailbox. And I've drove a fire truck for twenty years and when you're going to a house, you're not looking at mailboxes and, and curbs and sidewalks. You're looking at the front of the house to find the house. And it's like I told Tim, with the fire department, we kinda know where we're going. If there's smoke boiling out of your house, that's where we're headed. But EMS and law enforcement don't know that, you know?
Or city guys, yeah.
If they're going responding on a call, you know, we've got the advantage if your house is on fire and there's smoke coming out, but we can pretty much pick it out. If somebody's having a heart attack in the house, EMS don't know that.
Right.
I, I don't know. I might be looking at it wrong, but I just, I just wanna do what Allen wants and what the Chief Sanders wants and what Jeff and Jason want is, I, I don't need to go find Marshall's house and I don't need to go find Tim's house. I wanna do what Allen wants, that what the law enforcement and what the fire chief and what the EMS want. That, I mean, that, we did this to help them and then we're trying to dictate it.
And that's why I did what I did because Allen's, like, when I went to go look, Allen said they need to be on the house.
Right, right.
I went through and I did what Allen wanted done.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we need to, it needs to be spelled out in the ordinance, one way or the other. That's all I'm saying. I don't agree with them down on the curb and on the mailbox being sufficient for a house.
Well, and that's, and I'll agree with you a hundred percent. I, as long as we can find, that's the big thing. Here, my biggest fear is especially with EMS being volunteered or, you know, or, you know, on call and then they're coming out and we're going down. I don't wanna drive down a street, cause we spotlight all the houses and when it's dark and we're trying to find an address. And if somebody's having a heart attack or they're not breathing or, you know, unresponsive and laying in the house, I don't want, I don't want me or the officer, cause we're usually there first before EMS gets there most of the time. I don't wanna drive past that house and on the third time finally find the numbers and the, and the family members have seen us driving by and we've wasted a good couple of minutes when we could've been in there. That's, and the other thing is for us, and it, and it's only for law enforcement tactical wise, is just, you know, our, our training is, is when you go to a domestic violence call, you never park at the residence. You park a half a block down at the minimum and you walk up. You never just pull up because they're not gonna be happy you're there to begin with. So us trying to be able to walk next to a house and they're on the curb and we're maybe using the house as cover walking through some yards to get up to the house, waiting on a backup officer or whatever, it's just nice to be able to see. I mean, I don't wanna, you know, rock the boat and, and say that it has to be one certain way. I'm, I'm okay. I just, really, all I care is that we can find the house and all that. And I don't think curbs and mailboxes are the way to go. Now, whether or not you guys wanna vote for the rocks that are either up on the porch or right there to the house, that, you know, that's for other chiefs too to, to determine what they like, but I just, I don't agree with the mailbox or the curb. I, I just don't like...
In a perfect world, you wished it was two foot from everybody's front door.
Sure.
Right, right by the door where you could drive by and see it.
Yeah.
Look and see it.
Whatever it is, you just want it uniform so you can...
Well, yeah, you know, when one, one person has it on a curb, another one has it on a mailbox, somebody has it on a rock that's to the side of their driveway. One person has it next to the door, others have it on their garage right above their door. You know, and I mean, it takes us a minute, but at least those, then over here, we find. It's these out here that we don't.
Look for the door, then find the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. That's just kinda where we're at. It's just, as long as it's here. But, uh, that's kinda what I care, yeah. That's just my opinion only though. Cause I know like one twenty-two, one twenty-two south, Pearl or Prairie. Theirs is next to the door, but then they have all the, the trailer house. They have all the evergreens up and you can't see it. You've gotta catch it just perfect right in that one little window that you can see it and you can't see it any other way.
The one facing to the south?
The one facing to the west.
One facing to the west. Down there right off of Santa Fe and be Prairie, Pearl. Be Pearl. Yeah. That, I mean, that was a little tough. It was challenging today just to mark them off the list, driving up and down and it was daylight, no stress, no nothing. And there was a few of them that were quite tough to get, but that's just kinda my, only, only my opinion.
Anybody else have any opinion on that?
I'd just say not on the mailbox or the curb.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds good. So I think we just need to get John to put it in there that it needs to be in front of the residence, by the house or attached to the house.
Okay.
And on the curb and on the mailbox is not acceptable.
Plain visibility from the street.
Correct.
The street side of the house. When you say in front of the house, it's from the street side.
In front of the house or attached to the house, not on the curb, not on the mailbox.
That'll work.
So I guess we'll just have John draw that up.
Yeah.
Do an amendment to it.
Six inches tall and eve.
Okay. All right, uh... Talked about the swimming pool a little bit. You got anything else on that?
Yes, um, my, what year of talking with foreign brothers, um, they came down and did those test patches and they are still running behind and trying to play catch up. Um, so we've kind of talked and made a plan to at least get them down here and get the bottom, um... Yeah, cause it's a two coat thing. So what we're gonna do this year, the problem is, is the cracks in the sidewalls that we weren't aware of. So, um, this year, we're gonna come and sandblast everything and then do one coat of that sealer. And then when we drain the pool in the fall, they will come back when they have more time and more time to talk with the other company about getting in there and getting those cracks sealed the way that they need to be.
Those pits, do real deep pits.
Mm-hmm. But he said, you know, if we come in and get that bottom done, it's not gonna be, um, as noticeable, I guess, as the sidewalls. And then this fall, we can get everything, the second coat on and then the sidewall's done. And then with the, the new, um, concrete, Stephanie and I have been looking at, um, you know, in her requests, she's talked about new, um, lifeguard stations and then just some like extra shade. And she said umbrellas really haven't worked in the past, so we're looking at different canopy options. So that, that's just something that we've been working on to try to create more shade and we'll probably look at more tables and stuff just to make it a little bit more family friendly. There's not a ton of seating and shade and stuff, so. But...
But that's the only bid we have?
We thought we were going to get it done before season, but I told him that we still, like, she wants it filled at the beginning in May. So I told him that we want it filled at the beginning in May, that we need to get down here and get at least that first coat done. And yes, it's the only bid. It's the ones that I've been talking to for a year.
They're, they're the best there is. I mean, they came down and helped us last year out when they were...
Yeah.
I'm good with that. I'd say just get it done.
Yeah, he's, and, and that's what he's nervous about, especially with the sidewalls is he...
You got eleven days?
Yeah, I know. He goes by the first of May and I said, "Well, I mean, maybe we can go into the next couple of weeks of May," but yeah, she wants it as soon as we can. So, um, that, I mean, that is the plan. So we'll, we'll keep moving forward on that and he's, he's super nervous about trying to give us a quote on how much it's gonna take for, um, just labor on even on the sidewalls. So he wants to play a little bit more before, so. That is that plan.
Okay. All right. You got anything for the sewer report?
No, nothing more than Jason said.
Nothing more than what he's already said. Okay. Uh, property code violations.
Um, I think I heard Chad and Bobby talking about May first for Fourth Street coming down. I told them that I could drive a dump truck for them if they wanted me to. But it had to, uh, be automatic.
I'm sure where they are.
And then, um, the two on West first should be ready to be torn down. Right now, I'm try, I'm running into the problem of, um, I've asked Chad to quote all of these for tear down and complete level out, ready to be built on. Um, the other bids I need to look for is trying to find someone to clean them out. And I don't even know where to go. Marshall and I talked about it. He's gonna talk and maybe see if we can't find some people that need community service. So that's our next step on that. And eight oh eight North Exchange is down.
Take it off?
We can take it off.
And they kept, they kept that property.
Yeah, it was done by them. They paid for it. They did it all, so.
And they mowed it last year, didn't they?
Yeah, they started taking care of it.
Somebody did.
Mm-hmm. So.
I'm fine as long as it's tore down, cleaned up.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Cause that house was bad.
It was a lot worse than, like, it looked bad, but when you went in, it was...
I mean, not only was the ceiling falling on the floor moldy, but the floor was moldy, the walls were moldy. I mean, you didn't touch anything in there. It had mold growing all over in it.
Yikes.
And just from all the water running into it.
Boy. Anything else on that? Okay. Heard a little bit about truck parking. Anything else on truck parking?
Um, I ha, I think I wrote it in my report. I have Phil, um, checking everything out for me and he's gonna get back to me when he can and I'm gonna try to, um, get a couple of people's opinion on moving forward. The state gave us the okay to get in there and, and do anything with the culvert that we needed to. So I'm just gonna get Phil to give me some calculations and maybe call a different, a couple of different companies and see what we can't get done.
And for your report, uh, the media for nitrate facility and engine for, you have no updates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, bulk water project.
Um, Jason called Rosenkranz again this morning and, um, tried to get a little bit better of a bid. We're, we're kind of leaning on, on not going with the animation. It's a pretty big project that we can really just get done with a, a meter being in there and, um, I had called Ryan this morning and, and talked about just even a key. Like you, you go up there, you turn the key and you can't turn, you can't stop the key until you're done filling. And then it can be metered. I don't know necessarily if we wanna stay on the honor system or, cause I mean, the biggest thing is having it metered. So we can either stay on the honor system or they need to call whenever, whenever water's taken.
We got cameras at the power plant. Would've hurt to put a few more in and we would know exactly who's getting water.
Correct. So...
Put one in the, inside the wellhouse if you have to.
Yeah. And so, I mean, that's just a, a cheaper option. And the biggest, the biggest thing is getting, getting the water metered. I mean, that is the main goal of the project. So, um, and looking through the bids, Rosenkranz didn't get us a bid for the electricity side of things. They had to send it off to a different company and they couldn't do it. But I, we did get another bid from Davis Electrical, um, to do the entire project in full. And I gave you a copy of that, so. And I, I believe that, um, your bid from Davis is, is gonna be a little bit less of, um, of a meter. The, the meter that Rosenkranz sent over for us was, how much was it gonna pump?
We're gonna have to just hold off on that because when I called him, I wanted to get apples to apples kinda thing. That's what I did. He sent me a new bid and I'm gonna wait for that one before I even say anything to get, to get him back. I seen the bid, the new bid. But I wanna wait for the electric part to get in.
Okay.
And then I'll give it to you all and then you can email them out if I don't...
So expect, so this, this pump that we quoted, you know, it specs out a hundred and fifty gallons per minute. At a hundred and fifty, probably gonna be hanging at sixty. It's probably gonna be closer to two hundred. I'm not gonna say that because it's not down in there. We looked at it and, you know, if someone comes and gets water from you and they have to wait ten minutes to fill up their trailer. If they don't like it, they'll, they can just go somewhere else. I mean, that, that's pretty fast. I mean, two hundred gallons a minute, a hundred and fifty gallons a minute, that's, that's fast and you know what, like Jamie talked about, it'd just be a key switch. You go turn it on. If you want a lockable cover over it, you can put a padlock on it. Everybody has the same key for the padlock. Just go on the honor system. We priced a water meter. It was like two thousand dollars. That's figured in there. This is turnkey, job done, so.
I just, I just wanted to make sure when I, when I was talking to everybody about the key. Is that way on Saturday night or kids running around or somebody drives around and they just go over and click that switch, you're gonna have thousands of gallons running out before anybody even notices it. And that's why I was wanting it locked up or use a key system right up next or something outside.
So, I mean, I did some research on the, I mean, the automa, automated bulk water station would be awesome, but a lot of communities don't even have that. And my uncle actually works for the water department in Russell and I was picking his brain about everything. He said, "No, we just have a portable water meter and we'll get called out and, and go do it." Meanwhile, it would be nice. We don't have but five customers, so spending that amount of money just even to help us with billing isn't, isn't suitable.
Same thing. I just wanted for his airport.
Yeah.
That's the main thing.
Yeah, it needs to be metered. And it doesn't need to go to the nitrate removal plant. That right there will save tremendous.
That'll save us money too. That's something else we need to keep in mind is changing this is gonna save us on how much water we treat that we send out.
Okay. Unless there's any more discussion, I'll move on to new business. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero six.
That is gonna be your resolution to set the date for the Tiff district hearing, just the beginning process of.
Does it have a date on it?
It was June. He emailed it to me.
Oh, June fifteenth.
Yeah.
And that will just be the public hearing for the city side of it, correct? I don't have any issues with it.
I mean, it's just part of the process. It's just step one.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no issue yet. And that's, that's what it's for, is for the issues.
Yep.
Right.
It's the beginning of the, and I don't think it's gonna be as, as much as it was at the grocery store, so that'll be nice.
Okay. Unless anybody has anything else to say about this, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, we have a five-minute executive session to discuss employee evaluation. Jamie, are you ready with that?
All right. Just table?
Uh, to include table and Jamie.
Some of.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at, uh, seven fifty-seven. Hold this meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to increase Jamie Getty's pay from twenty-six dollars to twenty-six fifty-two for her evaluation.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, unless we have any more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? Everyone raise your hand. Motion carries. Then we'll just stay here for a few more minutes. Motion, meeting adjourned.